All right, welcome, everybody. My name is Ethan Collier. I am Chair of the Chattanooga Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, and I wanted to go over a couple of highlights in regards to how our meeting's going to go today. And before we get started, so there have been some slides. I think, Mr. Schultz, I say that every week. I'm assuming they're still planned.
They're still, they were.
Okay, so maybe, maybe you've seen them. If this is your first time at Planning Commission, it could be helpful to just kind of know how this meeting goes. What I'll do is I'll read off the cases. Normally, I'll say the address and the case number. So if you have an agenda there in front of you, make sure you're following along closely because at times we move real quick, other times it moves painfully slow. So the pace can be hard to keep. This packet was mailed to all of Planning Commission, and Planning Commission got it a little over a week ago and has had the opportunity to review it in advance of today's meeting. So in many of these cases, Planning Commission already has reviewed the staff report that we'll see from time to time over the course of the day. So as I read off a case, I'm going to ask in every case, is there any opposition present? If you're here and you have questions or you have concerns, maybe you just want to make a statement, raise your hand when I ask if there's any opposition present. Because if we don't have any opposition present and we have a staff recommendation to approve, Planning Commission will take action on those items without having heard from you as the public. So we want to make sure we have the opportunity to hear from you. Raise your hand when I ask if there's any opposition present. I'll also ask if the applicant is present. If you are here and you're the applicant, make sure to raise your hand. So when we have a staff recommendation to deny or we have a number of people here in opposition, we will slow down the meeting and we'll hear those cases first by hearing the staff presentation so that everybody that's here can see the same thing that we're looking at. Then we'll hear from the applicant. The applicant will have seven minutes to present the reason for their rezoning request or whatever it is they're asking for. And then after we've heard from the applicant, the applicant will take a seat. And if you're here and you want to speak in regards to the case, make sure to get out of your chair after the applicant finishes and line up over here on the right side of the room behind this podium so that I can see how many people are here. Sometimes we have 10 or 15, maybe even 20 people, and they all want to speak in opposition to the case. The issue that we have is that we have a big agenda. We always have a big agenda, and we cap the total amount of time for opposition at nine minutes. And so what that will allow me to do is kind of make some decisions in regards to how we're going to handle each person's time. When you have your time to speak, come up to the mic. Make sure this red light is on. State your name and address for the record and say what it is you're concerned about. One thing that's really helpful to Planning Commission is as you're, as you're, as you're standing in line and you're listening to your neighbors maybe speak in opposition to the case, make sure you're listening to what they're saying because it's most helpful to Planning Commission if everybody's not repeating the same things over and over again. So make sure to use that nine minutes to the best of your ability anyways. When opposition's finished, we'll let you know because we have a clock right here that I'll be watching in regards to that total nine minutes. That's a lot of, everybody take their seat, and the applicant will have the opportunity to come back up and address any questions that the Planning Commission has after having heard from the opposition, now have two minutes to speak. That's how we're going to do today's meeting. Is there anything, Mr. Schultz, that I forgot to cover?
No, but I do like to cover one thing that's not on the agenda, but it was early on that got withdrawn, so it doesn't show on your agenda in case there's somebody here in the audience for it. It's case 2025-0082 for 8128 Graham Road. That case has been withdrawn and you don't see it on your agenda. They submitted the application materials in advance, and so it's been withdrawn in case somebody was here, there was somebody here earlier.
So what he means by withdrawn is we're not going to be hearing it today. So if you're here and you were here and are here in regards to that case, we're not going to hear it today. One other thing I'll ask is lots of times there's maybe 15, 20, 30, 40, 50 people here in opposition to one case. We know that's not the case today, but there might be a large group that's all here in regards to one case. Sometimes they have a spokesperson, that's fantastic. If not, we'll just work it out. But after we've taken action, the thing that you can do that's most helpful and most respectful to everybody else that's on the agenda is, and this, this is going to come off as rude. My wife tells me all the time that I come off as rude. I'm not trying to be rude. But after we've taken action, get out of the room as quickly as possible. You might want to gather out there in that area right outside this room and have some conversations about what just happened. Make sure that door gets shut behind you because we end up stuck for some number of minutes on our agenda. And everybody else that's here, their cases aren't being heard and we're not moving things along because everybody's stuck in here talking. So after we've taken action on our case, make sure to move out of the room as quickly as efficiently as possible so that we can get on with our agenda. With that, I'll jump into the first case. It's under subdivision plats and variances. It's item one on our agenda. It's HCSD-25-13, and it's the Willow Creek subdivision lots 1 through 131, located at 10400 East Brainerd Road, and it has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is HCSD-25-14. It's a final plat for the sanctuary at Signal Forest subdivision, phase three. It's lots 9 through 18, 35 through 39, and 52 for Signal Forest Drive. It's been recommended to defer for 30 days. Is the applicant present? And do you have, you're good with that? We have a motion to defer for 30 days, and that has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition present? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item three on our agenda is HCSD-25-15. It's a final plat. It's Ridge Song subdivision, phase one, lots 1 through 36, 137 through 165, and community lots 900 through 904, located at 7210 Snow Hill Road. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four on our agenda is HCSD-25-16. It's a final plat for Nature Trail subdivision, phase two, lots 129 through 140. In lot 528, it's got a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, HCSD-25-17. This is a final plat for Dallas Crossing subdivision, lots 1 through 48, located at 8348 Daisy Dallas Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nate, Mr. Berg.
Next case, item six, HCSD-25-18. It's a final plat for Flipper Bend subdivision, phase four, lots 137 through 151, located on Roberts Mill Road. Staff is recommended to defer for 30 days. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to defer for 30 days, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is HCSD-25-19. This is preliminary plat for Edgestone subdivision, phase six, lots 52 through 75, located at McDaniel Lane. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is the applicant present? And do you want to speak in regards to those conditions? Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next case on the agenda is item eight. It's SDP-25-11. This is a final plat for Wildflower subdivision, phase 1B, lots 36 through 59, 84 through 149, and 270 through 271, and community lots 1,005, 1,008 through 1,011, located at 7671 Goodwin Road. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? We have motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, SDP-25-13 is a final plat for Davidson Meadows subdivision, lots 14 through 29, 79 through 87, located at 7680 Davidson Road. And staff is recommended to approve with condition. Is the applicant present? And any questions or concerns with that condition? Okay, thank you. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Chairman, I request. Motion carries. Item 10 on our agenda is SDP-25-14. It's preliminary plat for McCallhill Court subdivision, lots 1 through 103, located at 5425 McCallhill Road. Staff, McCallhill, sorry. Staff's recommended to defer for 30 days. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? What's, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days. Did I hear a second on that? Yep, it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item 11, SDP-25-15. It's preliminary plat for Ruberton North subdivision, lots 1 through 179, located at 1547 Mercer Street. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant advised us this morning they would wish to defer this for 30 days. They're making some design changes.
Is there any opposition? Okay, we have a motion to defer for 30 days, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. We have one item here under old business, and that is case 2025-0047. This is the unaddressed properties in the 2500 block of Doolittle Street, and staff's recommended to deny this applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? All right, and the applicant's present. We've, we've seen this a couple of times, so I'm just going to jump straight to the applicant if you'd like to speak in regards to this. And then if we've got any questions for staff, we will. Mr. Kenner?
Yes, Michael Kenner, 114 Evening Side Drive, Chattanooga, Tennessee. I wish to withdraw the case.
Mr. Schultz, the applicant wants to withdraw. We need to take action on it.
You do, since it was deferred two months ago. It's on the agenda for action today. So if the applicant wishes to defer, oh, withdraw, you can.
So we've got a motion to with, to allow the applicant to withdraw the case, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? I'd like to have just a brief discussion if I could. What, what's the, we obviously have a motion and it has been seconded to allow you to withdraw it. What's the reason?
I prefer not to speak on that at this moment.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, so this, this case has, what the applicant just did is withdraw the application for all the rezoning. It's, it's no longer on our agenda. It's not on staff's. It's, it's like it never existed. It's completely gone, yes.
He could come back, he can come back with a new application. New signs will go up, new notifications will go out, just like it's a new case if one comes back.
Yes, so you're, you're free to go unless you want to stick around with us. All right, back into our agenda. The first item under new business is for rezoning closures, abandonment, special permits, and amendments. In this case, this is case 2025-0070, and it's located at 2000 East 14th Street. It's an application to rezone from RN-1-5 to CC. And staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive one email in opposition to this.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You're here in opposition? Okay, so you're, you're here with the applicant, is that correct? Okay, fantastic. And then is there any opposition present? Okay. Maybe come up to the mic so that we can at least explain. Could you introduce yourself?
Hi, yes, my name is Arlie Salazar.
All the way up to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
And he's the owner, Fabio Mendez. I was reading just now because I'm helping him with the process, and I was reading the staff recommendations, and he's curious if he's not going to be able to rezone his property.
The staff's recommendation is for us to deny his request to rezone the property, yes. But we haven't taken action on it yet. So that's, what, what has happened is he applied. He, he made application to the Regional Planning Agency. They've made a recommendation to us that, that we should deny his request, but we haven't heard it yet, and we haven't taken action on it yet, so.
Okay, what, what the next step should be followed by him?
We're going to do that right now. So if we could, you can just stay right there, Mr. Schultz.
Sure, and just, Plan Commission, no, when staff went out, there was no notification sign placed on the property. However, we did send letters out to budding property owners, but the sign was not up. So this is case 2025-70. This is a request to rezone from RN1 residential neighborhood zone to CC commercial corridor zone for a business with associated parking. It's roughly 0.15 acres in size. There's been no zoning issue on this particular piece of property. However, to the south, like you see that CMU1, that was rezoned in 2024 to UGC, then was equivalency zoned to CMU1 as part of the zoning code. Look at the zoning map. Everything north is RN15. There is no CC commercial corridor zone at this location. The commercial zones you do see are along Main Street, not into the subdivision residential area that you see here. This is currently a single-family dwelling. To the north and east or west of the site is a single-unit residential. To the south along Main Street is vacant land and a church, and the church has a big parking lot behind it abutting this property. Here's a view of the site. This is north of the site, another single-family dwelling. Now, this is south of the site from East Main Street. You see the parking lot with the church. This is east of the site, which is the church. West of the site, single-family dwelling. Now, this is west of the site, which is an alley. This site is located in Area 3 Historic Neighborhood Ridge Plan, which recommends mixed residential. Primary uses include two-to-four unit living, attached units, cottage courts, courtyard apartments, townhomes. It does allow secondary uses such as neighborhood-serving businesses such as coffee shops, bakeries, and restaurants. And it has secondary use criteria, like it has to be located near a school on a major corridor. It has all these different criteria. It doesn't meet any of those criteria. Here's a closer view of the place type recommendation again, which is mixed residential. Here's a site plan that was submitted with the application. Looks like they use an existing structure. Now, this request is not compatible with the Area 3 plan or the secondary use criteria. You see, it's not located on a A street, not located on a corner. The entire site would be developed with secondary uses as listed in the plan, and the plan does not support commercial uses mid-block in residential areas. The CC zone permits a wide range of uses from amusement facilities, hotels, and minor vehicle repair facilities that are not compatible with adjacent residential. The CC zone also allows taller buildings, 45 feet, which is taller than the adjacent residential, almost 10-foot difference. So based on those review criteria, staff recommended to deny this request.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right, so you heard the same thing we heard. Staff's recommended to deny for the reasons that were listed here. What, if anything, do you want to add to that?
Anything else he can do about that change it to residential? Anything that he can, he may change? And if he wants to reapply?
if, if he's thinking he wants to reapply, it may be best if he were to withdraw. We saw that happen earlier in the meeting. It, it could be helpful for him to have a meeting with staff to find out what different types of uses might be available inside the current zone.
Where he can do the meeting with the staff or?
Well, he would set that up after the meeting today.
It would be helpful to know what his intended use is.
Yep, does, does he know what his intended use is?
He wants to turn it into offices.
Right, so I think it definitely could be helpful to have a meeting with staff and get some recommendations on whether or not that's something that staff could recommend or, or whether or not that could work. But I think that might be helped, that probably would be the most helpful thing. But I would, so what I'm trying to tell you is I don't think you want us to take action on this today because what we, what we're going to do, I think, I don't, I don't, I can't speak for the whole Planning Commission, but I think what's about to happen is we're about to vote to deny this. The problem with that is that then he can't reapply for a different type of zone. So in order to keep us from voting to deny it, he should be asking right now for us to remove it from the agenda altogether.
Okay, so if he withdraw right now, he's going to talk to the staff, right?
I think he should. I mean, he'll need to initiate.
He's not going to talk to them right now, but he's going to set an appointment to talk to them later. And if you withdraw, you get a chance to redo this quickly. If we vote no, then it's done for a year.
Okay, so he would like to withdraw.
I move to withdraw.
We have a motion to withdraw, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Next case on the agenda is item two. It's case 2025-0071, and this is located at 806 Spears Avenue. Staff is recommended to approve with a condition for rezoning from RN-1-5 to RN-1-3. Is the applicant present? And is there any opposition present? All right, sir, any thoughts on the condition that staff has recommended? Are you familiar with that? Yeah. Okay, you haven't seen the staff recommendation?
While he's coming up, the one condition is parking shall be accessed through one curb cut and/or shared driveway.
Yes, and sorry, we, that was part of our plan.
Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve with staff recommendation. Did I hear a second? And it, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three on our agenda under new business is case 2025-0072, and this is located in the 7400 block of Pinewood Drive. It is an application to rezone from RN-1-6 to RN-2, and staff is recommended to deny. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Did you want to say something before we heard the staff presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Schultz?
Sure, there was, you may remember last, I think it was last month, right next door to this, to the left of this site. We had the same request to go to RN2, and it was opposition at that, that meeting last month. And the recommendation was deferred for 60 days for that applicant to meet with the neighborhood because there was opposition. So just to give you some background, the staff had a recommendation to deny on that case as well. So this is 2025-72. This is a request to rezone from RN16 to RN2 residential neighborhood zone for townhomes. This is less than an acre. This is less than an acre in size. Number of units proposed are 24. That's a density of 25 dwellings per acre. Now, look in the zoning map, you can see it's RN1 to the north and south and east. And to the west, further west is TRN3. And to the south is institutional uses. Again, as a state, there's no history on this property, but to last month, there was a request rezoned these two parcels to the same zone. Staff recommended to deny. Playing commission deferred for 60 days for the applicant to meet with opposition and come back with some plans. It's a vacant piece of property. To the north is institutional uses, to the west is vacant land, to the south is institutional. Up to the east is single-unit residential and to the west is single-unit residential. Looking at a bigger picture of this area, if you zoom out a little bit, you can see the site highlighted in red. To the west over here at Gun Barrel, that's single-family attached under construction. To the south of that side is single unit. To the north, my pointer's not working. To the north up here is multi-unit. And then you have single unit, and then you're right here, currently have single unit, single-family attached under construction. So there's a mixture of uses in this area. However, all these to the west of this site were rezoned prior to the new plan, which is adopted in 2024. So those zoning cases were prior to a new plan. This is a view of the site. North of the site, which is a church. South of the site. East of the site, single-family dwelling. This is west of the site. This is the area plan, Area 11, 2021, when it was adopted. The place type recommendation is suburban residential. And the primary uses include single-family detached as the primary uses. It does allow attached as secondary uses, but again, it has those same review criteria we mentioned in a case couple minutes ago. I'll go through that in a second. You can see here's the place type recommendation, suburban residential. This was the site plan that was submitted with a request. You can see it's very simple layout here. The request is not compatible with the suburban residential place type as recommended in East Brainerd Area Plan. Again, the plan does recommend single-unit detached as secondary uses, however, is not in compliance with those secondary use criteria. It's location in primary single-unit detached area and not like locate on a major corridor like Gun Barrel. The request is not compatible with adjacent single-unit detached land uses and development form along Pinewood Drive. And so staff recommended to deny this request.
Hey, Mike, before we get into the details of it, we've seen a lot of your site plans. And I feel like this is just subpar.
Sorry, yeah, I, my drawing is just not as good as it used to be, but I do have a new one to provide. How about that?
Well, that would be fantastic. Could we have it?
Thank you, Mike Price, MAP Engineers. So if you travel up and down Pinewood, you will see that it is definitely a mixed use in through there with apartments, large townhouse, communities in through there, some single-family. And it's an area that has experienced some growth over the years due to its proximity and access to Gun Barrel Road as well as getting over to Jenkins Road. So the plan that you have before you, which is hopefully a little bit better sketch than the one that you had previously to look at, indicates that what the proposal is, is to again, keep with the townhouses. However, what we are looking at is we would not have any driveways of these townhouses coming out onto Pinewood. And in fact, we would keep those to the interior, either building a public or private road, whichever the case may be. And then if there are any units that are there, which you see that would be on the left side, if we're able to work with our joining property owners, we would actually turn those to the side. So again, not to front anything facing Pinewood, which I think is in keeping with a character of the area and also landscaping and providing the screening in through there and with a single driveway point. I think this is far improvement over what you had looked at initially and probably what staff had taken under consideration. So again, looking at the plan that you have, I think this sort of addresses some of those concerns. Single-family development, for instance, could go into there and we could put multiple driveways on Pinewood and that'd be perfectly fine. But I don't think that that necessarily is in the betterment of this area. So with that, that's basically the presentation. I believe also that my client has had some conversation with some of the residents in the area. I don't know of any opposition again that's here today, and I think that ought to speak to itself with regards to the footwork that he has done as far as that goes. Any questions? Happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Price?
Have you spoken to the city council rep for this?
Not at this point. I plan to though. Yes.
Do y'all have a copy of this?
I just now saw it.
Okay, can, can this even be done in RN-2? Because that's, I mean, isn't that?
You can do townhomes in that zone.
But can you do 16 on one lot?
Oh, I don't know. That, it's, I'm not gonna make a decision on the fly here.
My experience is that that is not possible.
Yeah, I'm afraid it may not be.
It would take the additional lot beside us, the two lots beside us that were last month. If you look at just our lot alone, that is a total of seven.
I think the issue though is that lots not fronting the public street need to be subdivided or need to be in a multifamily zone under an HPR is my understanding.
Unless we build a public road.
And staff needs to clarify, so this site plan includes the lots from last month. And so we're not looking at that as part of this application and nor you're not on the application to represent.
Everything changes from last month to this month.
Yeah, so.
But I've got the applicant right here who, you know, can say with a shake of his head that yes, I'm supposed to.
And that's well, we need an amended application.
I'll get that to you after, after today.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
And we're also fine with deferring this until the other one comes in next month and maybe combining all this together and we can get with staff also between now and then at that point as well.
I'd entertain a motion.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days. That has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to make a point to the area plan, if you go back to that map. Something that stood out to me is if you go to the zoomed out one, how close we have suburban residential budding up against town center. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. There's not really a lot of step down. It seems like a very drastic change from a very dense commercial corridor to suburban residential. Like, I want us to be thinking about that as we move into the city planning process in the coming months. So just want to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case on our agenda is item four. It's a mandatory referral, 2025-0074. And this is located at 510 Oak Street and 517 McCully Avenue. And it has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, yeah, if I could.
Well, I heard that, but it's too late now. I thought, well, that's funny. He didn't recuse himself. He's actually seconding.
And if I can retroactively, I will. I don't think it makes much of a difference.
You've recused yourself and you're, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to recuse yourself? Okay, there you go. All right, now we got it all in order. All right. Next case on the agenda is item five. It's case 2025-0075. And this is located at 7404 Tyner Road. And staff is recommended to approve with a condition for the rezoning from RN-2 to CC. Is there any opposition present? Okay, and is the applicant present? All right.
I have to recuse myself in this one as well.
Okay, Mr. Schultz?
Sure, this is case 2025-75. This is a request to rezone from RN2 residential neighborhood zone to CC, commercial corridor zone for a proposed use of a medical office and associated parking. It's a little less than an acre in size. You look at the zoning map, to the south and east is CC, commercial corridors on the same zone as applicants requesting. And then to the north, there's CC as well, same zone applicants requesting, followed by RN2 to the west and south and north of the site. So it's a mixture of zones in this general area. There's also some zoning history in this area, not on this particular piece of property, but everything abutting it. See to the south is C2, well, was it rezoned C2, then got equivalency map, map to CC in 2024 for extension of the Chattanooga Sports for Medicine Surgery Center. Then also over here along I-75 and Sonia Lane, that was rezoned to C2 with six conditions in 2008. So there's been a history of zoning cases in this area as this area has transitioned from residential to more of a medical office area. Looking at the zoning map, you see, aerial map, you see Tunia Residential to the north, commercial to the west along Lee Highway. You have a single unit immediately abutting this side to the east. And then you go further east towards I-75, you do see the medical office that's sitting there currently today. Here's a view of the site. This is north of the site, some of the single-unit detached. This is south of the side, medical office complex. East of the side, single-family dwelling. This is west of the site, some of the commercial that you'd see along Lee Highway. This property is in the Schalford Road, Lee Highway area plan. That's one of our older plans as well, which is adopted in 2005. The place type or plan recommendation was heavy business mix for this location, which identifies this parcel as being appropriate for commercial type uses. Here's a closer view of this area. You see everything west or east of, south or east of Lee Highway towards I-75 is recommended for a heavy business mix type zone and uses. Here's the site plan that was submitted with the application. This request is compatible with adopted land use plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and development form that's found in this area. This request is an extension of existing CC zones. Staff does recommend a condition limiting the uses to ensure compatibility with some of the residential homes that are nearby. So staff recommended to approve with one condition, office, medical office and associated parking uses only. And that's been depressed in this area on the previous zoning cases.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for the staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you. I'm Becky Farmer. I'm the CEO of Center for Sports Medicine and Orthopedics for the surgery center that you saw and then also on the clinic. After we built the surgery center, our plan overall was to grow that area to be able to provide access for our patients in that area. We have 11 clinics overall, but frankly, we're growing and we need more clinic space for the doctors to see patients in clinics. So we've worked with that area to acquire homes and to prepare, to build an office building that would provide for 12 clinics. So where 12 physicians can work at one time. We have made offers that's contingent with, you know, more than fair market value price per square foot for all of the areas. And even for the gentleman's here for opposition. And the price that he came in with was just so high that we couldn't, we couldn't go that high compared to what we had paid for all the others. So we have adjusted our building such that we can go ahead and build with this one if it gets approved today and be able to go forward with our plan. Is that everything you need from me?
Yes, ma'am, I think so. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Becky. Just for verification, normally, and this is in District 6, which is my district, I ask developers or property owners to meet with the people that live in the community just to make sure that they understand the scope of the project and talk about any impact that they perceive. You mentioned that you met with the opposition today. Did you meet with everybody in that general area?
Our representative, Kevin Womack, has met with all of the homeowners as we've purchased this lot and including this homeowner several times just now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Stay close because you'll want to speak after we hear from the opposition. Sir, you're here in opposition. If you want to speak, now's the time to do that.
I'm the homeowner of 7406 Tyner Road. I've owned that property for years now.
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is John Ruth.
Thank you.
And I'm the homeowner of 7406 Tyner Road. I've owned this property for years. It's a natural flow. There's a big ditch to the right of the property. They're fixing to try to make it commercialize. First, they had a plan to build this building behind me and the center to the left of me. I didn't oppose this because I didn't know they were coming in to take Sommy Road back out. It's been, it's been a road there. It's never been used for many, many years. And I would like to have half that road if possible. I think usually give it to half each one, but I'd like to have half. But the forest, the property they're trying to do now to the right of me, there's a big huge ditch that runs all the way down that property. And that water naturally flows from my property always across this property into the ditch. It's been doing that for several, for years. That's the way it is. I haven't been offered a fair price. I want to sell out, you know, for a decent price. There's three of us up there on the Tyner Road, the guy to the left of me, they offered him 1.3 million.
Let me interrupt because we don't really care. And we don't want to hear about like what happened between you and the owners in regards to purchasing or selling the property. We do care about everything else you're saying. I just didn't want you to go into detail in regards to sale prices and all those things because it really just doesn't matter to the Planning Commission. But hey, could you help me understand, Mr. Schultz, where's his property in relation to this map we're looking at?
I believe he's right here. I believe he can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's the one right here.
You're looking at the map.
I'm showing up here.
Up here on the screen.
They pour shoot all around me. I'm right there, the only property left. They bought the property to the left and made the big building, and now they want to build behind me. And now they've changed the plan on you. Now they might come up with a new plan to buy the one on the right and commercialize that zone, which I think it should be relooked at considering how much the water flows off my property. We should at least have a better look at this. Basically, I'm right in the middle. They pour shoot all around me. They bought four properties behind me, one to the left of me, and then they changed the plan and bought the one to the right of me. So I wish you would reconsider this recommendation about trying to make this commercial. At least put it off or we can see it better.
Was there something about an open, an open right of way there or something? Is that what you, was there? What was that? What road was he?
Sonia Lane, portion of Sonia Lane has been closed. I don't, I didn't think it was in front of, near him. I don't think.
Borders my property 250 foot and I used to get half to each property owner on each side, so I was pressing half of that.
I was thinking Sonia Lane. I had to go back and check. I thought it was down here closer to where the existing medical office is to the south.
That's right on me. Matter of fact, it comes eight foot off my property line to the left of me. That's one of the reasons I'm complaining about all this. That property line comes in eight foot, goes right down my driveway, actually, if you can look at it.
Is there an application in to abandon the right of way?
No, we had one last year. It was on Sonia. That's why I'm just going from memory. I thought it was further south down here. Sony, his, the right of way does come up. His house is right here. You can sort of see where it says single-unit residential underneath it. That property, the right of way, looks like it's close to his house. I think that's what he's saying. It's eight foot off of his.
It's, I mean, he could technically apply to have that right of way closed, correct?
He could, anybody could.
Currently, the applicant in regards to this case is not applying for any right of way abandonment. So the section of road that is adjacent to your house is not currently.
It hasn't been there for years, but I've seen the plan where they gave him 22 foot of right of way on that Somme Road I was looking at. Is that not the case?
Well, that is certainly not the case for today's agenda. So it is not on our agenda for them to, they're not requesting any of that right of way.
But you have the right to. At some point, you can ask to close that right of way if it's not being used. And then that is typically what happens, the two owners split it. But you, somebody has to apply to close it.
It's one of the property we've been talking about today. There's a lot of water that comes from that land from the marketplace. They built that land up and they put that big building to the left of me. It flows across that land into that big huge ditch that's nobody's mentioning about. I think we should take a better look at this before we approve this. And maybe we can work something out where I can at least be bought out. If not, I'd like to have a big buffer on that property because it's commercial all around me. If you approve this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I checked in the staff report. We did have a closure last year, MR 2024-150 closed an unnamed right of way in the 7400 block of Sonia Lane, which is to the south down here. It's this little portion that's on the screen right here. There's Sonia, there's Sonia Lane. It's right here. So we closed it.
Okay. Okay, so not, not adjacent to you. All right, anything else?
That's it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Justin Johnson, and I'm with Reagan Smith, and I'll be speaking to some of the questions that the property owner had about the drainage. With any good project we have, we deal with drainage and we will provide a natural flow through our site to the existing drainage ditch as we should always do to be a good neighbor and not to cause any kind of damming up of water. And also on the unopened right of way, as you can see on the plan, we've met with C dot and had some discussions about what improvements need to be made. So that could be another access point to our site.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're saying that what you want to do is actually improve the existing right of way where it is and actually open that up?
Right. Any other questions? What's will the commission?
Second.
We do have a condition in this case. We have a motion to approve with condition, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, item six on our agenda is case 2025 dash zero zero seven seven, and this is located one zero three forty East Brainerd Road, and it is an application to rezone from A one to R one. It's recommended by staff to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? All right, is the applicant present? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I thought, I thought so. I thought, well, maybe he's not the applicant on this one. All right, so you've got some opposition here. We're going to hear from Mr. Schultz first.
I don't have any time left, according to Karen. This case 2025 seventy seven, this is a request rezoned from A one Agricultural District to, the screen went out, to R one Residential District, proposed use of residential development. It's roughly 9.6 acres in size. This is also connected to the, if you see on the map, the crosshatch area to the south is part of that overall development. So the density or number of units for this entire site, including the area being rezoned, is 226 residential units. That's a density of 2.8. There's no zoning history on this particular piece of property, however, to the south, a couple of months ago, 2024, this area to the south was rezoned from A one to R one with conditions and also received a special permit for a PUD with conditions. This property is currently a single family dwelling. To the north, a single unit residential. To the east is vacant land, and to the west is a single unit residential. And to the west here is a single unit residential that's under construction at some point. They've already been rezoned, just haven't started construction yet. And then, of course, immediately abutting this to the south is an approved residential PUD. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is north of the site, which is single family dwellings. South of the site, single family dwellings. This is west of the site. We can see, again, I mentioned earlier, some of that single family dwelling under construction. This property is located in the Area 12 White Oak Mountain Plan, which is adopted in 2019. And the place type recommendation is suburban residential and natural resources overlay, as it does have a flood plain or floodway along the frontage along East Brainerd Road. The primary uses in this place type are single unit living detached. So this request would be compatible with adopted plan. Here's a closer view of the area and the recommendation suburban residential. You see that natural resources overlay along the stream. Here's the overall PUD plan, or because the next case is to amend the PUD plan, but this is the area in the red box being requested to be rezoned from A one to R one. And then to the south is overall PUD plan for this, for this site. This request to rezoning is compatible with adopted land use plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and development reform, which is single family dwellings. This request is an extension of existing zone. Staff does recommend lifting, carrying conditions over from the previous zoning case. So staff recommends to approve with three conditions, subject to approval of residential plan during development. Dedicate sufficient right of way as determined by the Hampton County Highway Department to complete the road widening to three lanes as required in this area. Road widening is required from the frontage of the property and continuing in conjunction with other Pratt project widening to the south of the side. Again, these are carryover conditions for the previous zoning case. If you're locked, I go ahead and go into the PUD if you're locked.
Yes, please.
So the next case is 2025, 2025 seventy eight, is because this is being rezoned. They're adding to the PUD. It's a PUD boundary change. Therefore, it's a major change. You have to come back for this body as well as county commission. So the change will be 80 acres, roughly 226 units. It's a density of 2.82. You can see again, has a large PUD on already. You're just adding this nine acre area to it. Same size, same area. I'll give it over to the screen here. The current PUD to the south is 70 acres. It's single unit detached and attached units. It has already been approved for 42 attached units and 186 detached. That's a total of 228 units. The density is 3.23 and has roughly 18 and a half acres of open space. By rezoning this nine acres and adding it to the PUD, the acres goes up to 80.10 acres. Still same type of use of single unit detached and attached. The number of attached units stays the same at 42. And actually, the number of single family detached is going down by two units to 184, as well as the total unit count goes down by two to 226. The density goes down to 2.82 dwellings per acre. The number of acres devoted to open space increases to 22.84. So staff recommends to approve the PUD amendment with a condition, a top A landscape buffer along the East Brainerd Road frontage except for areas designated for ingress and egress. So both these cases come to the planning commission with staff recommendation to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the opposition. I saw a couple of hands go up. I'm sorry. Ian, we'll hear from you first. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Clemens, I live on London Lane. I have basically 39 acres that backs up to this development. My concern is I have a natural running spring that's been there. I've been there since 1997. And I've discussed this with Pratt before, the representatives, about that spring in the back. It comes out of these big boulders and stuff. And what I see on their updated version with the density of the homes and stuff, they will, they'll be backed up dead against my property, which is a farm property. It's got horse, horse barns and horses and that whole wooded area will be no longer a wooded area. Those homes will be backed up dead against my farm property. That spring is right in the corner. It'd be the southeast corner of that property, right, right in where you're at, right there. And people from the Smithsonian Institute came out and took water samples from that spring. Went back down into the boulders and took water samples out. It's a very, very, very clean. It supported three crustaceans, which that's a very clean level for water. He said you could drink this without having to have it purified. Well, that runs continuously. My question was, what are you going to do about the spring hole back there? And they said, there is no spring. I beg to differ. So they said, would you walk that with me? And I'll show you. I'd be glad to. I know they're going to develop. I just want to know what they're going to do with the natural things that happen and what will happen to that. That creek runs all the way down through my property, always have. And I want to know what the density level is going to do to that when they take out all the trees. You mentioned a buffer zone along East Brainerd Road. Well, that's fine. There's other people that border that property. We bought out there to be out in the country. They're not talking about any kind of a buffer zone to my side. And I want to know what's going to be done about that creek or if that's just going to be, oh, we didn't know it was there, which they sent two representatives out. They're aware of it. And that's my question, you know.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to answer. Thank you. Ian.
Ian Blackmore, Pratt and Associates, 1734 Dayton Boulevard. I'll speak to Mr. Clemens. Questions first, and then I had a few notes. Mr. Clemens was generous enough to let us onto his property and walk it. We then followed up with our geotechnical and environmental consultants. They've done a study or a report on it. It's very likely that the slopes in that area are too steep to develop. We can't, generally, the topography is not accounted for in the zoning plan. But if, if, if you go back to the previous PUD, from that PUD to this PUD, nothing in that area changed on the PUD plan. However, as you go through engineering and stormwater calculations, all, I do believe that the steep slopes, the vegetation, and the, it was not deemed a stream, a spring or whatever he mentioned, but that wet weather conveyance that was, is going to probably remain left alone.
Okay, thank you. And then also, can you speak to the, the PUD requirement for buffering? Because he had mentioned that there wasn't any buffer, but we
The PUD requires a
You probably do have a
A 25 foot PUD setback, so no homes or structures or anything can be built within that. And like I mentioned, that property line that it butts is, is, is already, or it's naturally steep slope. So I would, I would assume that that is preserved just due to the natural topography.
Thank you.
I did want to mention a few things. So this original PUD came before y'all in the, in the fall. It was approved. It was approved at county commission. And after it was approved, we got into our engineering. We had some coordination meetings with county staff about roadway improvements, the East Brainerd Road. In the previous PUD plan, if you can show that, the entrance was hundreds of feet south. It would have created Magnolia Farms entrance, this entrance, the Thomas property. It was going to be very staggered, very choppy, very unsafe. So in coordination with county staff and as part of looking at the future plans for East Brainerd, it was determined that if we were able to acquire this property, it allows a four-way cross intersection with the Thomas property, which was already zoned and approved and plans have been submitted. So it allows us to, to line up those two entrances. That was really the main thing for this PUD amendment change, that the lot count's gone down, density's gone down, green space has gone up. But it's the safety and it's the traffic flow of East Brainerd Road that's what really triggered this additional acquisition and PUD amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, and then you've got some conditions and you're fine with all those?
Yes, I will probably need to just make a few wording changes to the landscape buffer because there's stream buffers. There's other things in there that I'm good with as it sits. I think we can refine the wording a little bit at county commission.
Okay. All right, so we'll take action on these independently in regards to item six on our agenda, case 2025 dash zero zero seven seven, which is the rezoning request. What's the, will the commission approve? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And in regards to item seven, which is case 2025 dash zero zero seven eight, the plan unit development, staff is recommended to approve with conditions. What's the approval? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a mandatory referral. It's item eight. It's case 2025 dash zero zero seven nine, and this is for an unopened block of Chambliss Street, and it's a right of way closure request. Staff is recommended to defer for 30 days. Is the applicant present? We have a motion to defer for 30 days, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is case 2025 dash zero zero eight zero, and this is located at 6525 Hunt Drive. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. The applicant's request to rezon from RN one dash six to RN dash three. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Yes. And do you have any questions or concerns with the conditions? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is case 2025 dash zero zero eight one, and this is located in the 3600 block of Chris, do you want to say it? Because you might pronounce it correctly. S A P U L P A. Anybody? Sapu
Sapu Sapu Sapu
Okay, there we go.
We just caught the S.
All right, 3600 block of Sapu Blah Street. Staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request for rezoning from RN one dash six to RN one dash five. Is there any opposition present? All right, and I'm assuming you're the applicant?
Yeah, I'm the applicant.
Okay.
So right now I have to keep the zone the way it is.
What staff has recommended is that we deny your request for rezoning. So have you seen the staff recommendation? You would have gotten one in the mail. Are you the property owner?
Yes.
And you're the applicant?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I can't hear you, sir.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kim Ching-Wen. My address is two three zero nine Cushman Street, Chattanooga.
Okay, thank you. And so staff would have mailed out a recommendation or
We typically email that out.
Email it.
And it's like, you may have it. Is it?
I didn't get it.
Okay, anyway, the one thing that staff needs to note too, there was no sign up when staff looked at this. There was no sign notification. But we did, again, email letter, or not email, send letters out to abutting property owners, but there was no notification sign up.
Okay.
You want me to go through the?
Yes, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah.
So pay, pay attention while he goes through this staff recommendation.
Well, I'm going to go through, I'm going to go through the presentation first.
Thank you.
Yeah, this case 2025, 2025 eighty one, this is a request rezoned this property from RN one six, which is a 6,000 square foot lot size, to RN one five, which is a 5,000 square foot lot size. The uses are the same. The only difference is lot frontage and lot size. It's proposed use, it's two lots now. She wants to do five lots, single family lots. It's roughly one acre in size. Number of units proposed is five, and that's a density of five dwellings per acre. Look at the zoning map. There is no RN one five near this property. Again, it's a new zone. On this piece of property, it's vacant. To the north is single unit residential. To the west, behind this property is vacant land. To the south is single unit residential, and to the east across Sapu Blah Street, a single unit residential and vacant land. I butchered his name, Chris. Probably not. So it's a, here's a picture of the site. I'm just going to call it S from now on. Here's north of the site, single family dwelling. South of the side, another single family dwelling. East of the side, single family dwelling. This is west of the site, some type of utility infrastructure. This is the S street. You can see, looking down, it's vacant on one side and some single family on the other side. This property is in a Historic River Ridge Plan, which is adopted in 2020. It recommends suburban residential and natural resources overlay due to topography issues. The primary uses are single unit detached dwellings with a density less than five dwellings per acre. Here's a close up of the suburban residential place type for Historic River Ridge Plan, getting see it's suburban residential. Here's the site plan submitted with the request. You can see it's five single family lots. Here's an aerial view, not aerial view, but on the right hand side is a tax map from GIS. Based on Hampton County GIS, the applicant appears not to have enough road frontage to construct five lots in the RN one five. The total lot frontage is roughly 239 feet. The RN one five zone requires a minimum lot frontage of 50 feet for each lot. So to construct five lots, you have to have 250 feet of frontage. She has only 239. The applicant can construct four single unit detached units and four ADUs on the site with the current RN one zoning. So this request is not compatible with Area Three Plan. It would introduce a higher density form into the area. Again, this was equivalency zoned RN one six outside the urban overlay. For inside the urban overlay, that's what RN one five would be, so it's not at this location. So staff recommends to deny this request and keep it RN one six where she can get what appears to be four single family homes and four what appears to be four single family homes and four ADUs as presently zoned.
So having heard the staff recommendation, do you do you have any comments? Do you want to say anything in regards to what we've just heard? Do you want us to take action on this?
If anything, I don't know. I would ask this Emily.
Okay, well, Emily is staff and staff is recommending that we deny your request. So we're not going to put her on the spot.
Emily meets with applicants for.
Okay, so we did this earlier and I'm going to suggest we do the same here. A, you didn't post your signs because they or if they were posted, they were removed. So did you get signs?
I did.
Did you post them?
Yes.
Okay, you did post the signs? Okay, well, when they went out there, they weren't there.
Really, it's hiding in the bushes.
Right, but when you there's specific instructions and you have to post them where they're visible to the neighbors. So they weren't posted where they were visible to your neighbors. And then in addition to that, staff is recommended to deny, and they've illustrated that.
It there were storms that may have fallen down, maybe out there.
Sure.
Somebody took it down.
Okay, so I would suggest, I really don't think we should deny this because I'm afraid that you probably don't want it denied. I really wished you would withdraw it and potentially come up with something better and or nothing at all. I'd love to.
As it's zone, as it as presently zoned today, you can get four homes. And four ADUs you can get. So if you go through the zoning and it's denied at City Council, you could. I don't think it's what you want. I don't think you want it denied.
We have a we have a motion. Sure, we have a motion to withdraw and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
I can resume for all, right?
No, you don't.
Do it, resume. You're good. You're good as it's.
What now? Hold on one second. Let me let's take action real quick before we tell her she's good to start building four houses because she's not. All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carry. All right, so you can replat that property. You need to go talk to a surveyor and replat it with its current zone for four lots.
Oh.
Okay, so talk to a surveyor. Tell them what you want to do. Okay? We're finished with your case.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next case on our agenda is item eleven. It's a mandatory referral case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight three, and it's located at fifteen forty-seven Mercer Street. And it's for sewer easement abandonment. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item twelve. It's case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight four, and it's located at twenty-one West Bell Avenue. Staff is recommended to approve the applicant's request for the rezoning from RN one dash five to C N T. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Chris has told me I'm going way too fast.
You obviously heard me on that last case. You tried to slow it down.
Said, you know, we have a follow-up meeting here at five and he's afraid if I give too long a recess, I might not get you back. So he has suggested that I slow this down a little. So let me give it a go.
You do get more food later.
So there's more food either way. But I'm going to give it I'm going to I'm going to give it a go at slowing it down. I'd hate to not have you all around here in a couple hours. All right, on item thirteen. Case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight five, located at seventy-four seventeen and seventy-four twenty-three Mentom Drive. We have an application to rezone from RN one dash six to TRN dash three. Staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? Yes, ma'am, you're here in opposition. Okay.
And we also received emails and opposition.
There you go. That'll slow it down.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Schultz?
Sure, this is case twenty twenty-five eighty-five. This is a request to rezone from RN one six residential neighborhood zone to TRN three, traditional residential neighborhood zone for townhomes. It's roughly two point nine two acres in size. Number of units proposed was twenty-six. That's a density of eight point nine zero dwelling units per acre. This is just south of Pinewood Drive. We had a case a couple few minutes ago. This is south of that on Mentom. Look at the zoning map. You have a mixture of zones in this area from RN three to the north, RN one six or five to the south, TRN three to the east, and then to the west is RN one six. There's been no zoning history in this particular piece of property, Howard to the north. And in twenty twenty-one, there was a rezoning case to do R one to R three with a special permit for a PUD. Then to the southeast, there was a case in twenty twenty-two to rezone R one to RTZ with conditions. To the north, this property is single unit attached under construction. To the west is single unit residential. To the east is single unit residential. To the south is vacant land and then single unit detached. As I did earlier on Pinewood Drive, zoom out view along Mentom. You see the sites right here in red. To the east and west is single unit detached. To the south, west, we have a single unit attached under construction. South of that is single unit attached. Then directly south of this side is single unit attached as well or detached. And then single unit attached to the southeast. There's a history of single unit attached units along Mentom. However, most of that was done back in the late nineties, early two thousands, well, in advance of the Hammond and Place Plan and the current plan that we have in place. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is south of Saddle Mentom. East of the site. West of the site. Again, this is in the East Brainerd Area Plan, which is adopted in twenty twenty-one. The placetime recommendation is suburban residential for single unit detached is the primary uses. Suburban residential placetime does allow single family attach as long as it meets the secondary use criteria. As stated before, this doesn't meet the secondary use criteria. Here's the site plan submitted with a request. It's one entrance off Mentom with a cul-de-sac, twenty-six townhome units. This request is not compatible with suburban residential placetime recommendations identified in the East Brainerd Area Plan. Again, it doesn't meet the secondary use criteria. It's not located on a major corridor or nor transit route. Not located on a near a commercial center, not located near a park or public school. The adopted plan policy does not recommend townhomes as infill residential development. Just to be clear, the adjacent RN two and TRN three rezonings to the north and west of the site are rezoned in again the eighties and nineties prior to the adoption of the plan Hamilton in two thousand and one and the twenty twenty-one Area Eleven Plan. So those were done prior to the plan. The TRN three zone is requested by the applicant is an urban zone and not appropriate at this location. As part of the transition to the new zoning map and equivalency mappings during the new zoning code, we had some rules in place. That's why the TRN three next door is there because of our rules in place. So staff recommended to deny this request. As of this morning, the applicant did submit a new site plan and with three conditions, and I'll have those on the screen when he gets ready to speak. But staff recommends to deny this request.
Thank you.
I got a question for staff. About two, that's the third time, I think, or maybe the second time that you've referenced zoning or things that were done in the seventies or eighties or nineties. But I want to make sure I understand. You're telling me that we've inside the city limits of Chattanooga, we are our current plan is for less density than we had previously. Is that correct?
No, I'm just saying those there are some history on Mentom of single unit attached. Just giving you some history of when those rezoned. Those rezoned prior to the most recent adopted plans.
What I'm asking you, you're saying is that the current plan allows for less density than what we were allowing in the eighties and nineties?
Yes, this this plan recommends suburban residential.
That seems backwards to me, but okay.
That's the adopted plan.
We have an opportunity coming up to look at new look at plans again. It's gonna be fun.
Mr. Ingram.
Hi, Joseph Ingram, Ingram Gore and Associates. I think so, Brian, if you bring up our new plan, we've kind of, is that it? That's nice work. So we kind of we've got a end user. And so this is kind of we backed off to these kind of these duplex units. So really, we're only showing sixteen. But I think if you read the last, you know, statement that was in the staff recommendation was that not to approve the zoning without a condition. Because, you know, the RN the RN three would let you do twenty-five units like we heard earlier. So we proposing we're proposing to put a density cap on this because it is it's a continuation of the zone next door, the zone across the street, the zone down the road. It's kind of like Mr. Payne said that this is this is an area that's this isn't area that's going to go attached. It's it's just there's a lot of challenges out here with rock and some other things. You have to get some sort of density and this property just doesn't doesn't lay really where we can do any kind of lots. But so we would propose my I got I got cataract surgery, so I can I can barely read right now. It's still it's still coming in. But what did I propose density, Brian? I'm sorry.
You've got three conditions with maximum density, eight units per acre equals twenty-three units. Screening against RN one six per city code and no more than three attached units is the three conditions that were on the bottom of your.
That would be that would be our kind of come back and say this would buffer us to the RN one six to the left. And then we're against our the same zone to the right. And then we may, you know, these would be single levels. We may we may end up with three, but right now we're looking at just these duplex units. And that would be that would be my case. And Mr. Payne kind of made the case that that's the cat's out of the bag here. This is there's already attached housing all up and down the road.
All right.
And then I'll save some time to respond to.
Sure. I saw some hands go up in opposition was yes. Would you like to speak? Come on up. Anybody else? Make sure to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Helen Caldwell. My address is two five three three Kingsley Court. Our property backs up to this property, property that they're talking about. The traffic on Mentom Road is already bad. It's a residential area. People like to walk. People enjoy walking their dogs, walking for exercise, and the traffic is already horrendous. If we have twenty-six more units opening out onto Mentom, it's going to make the traffic much worse. It's going to be these houses are going to back right up to our house and the whole row of people along there. It's going to be noisy and adversely affect the quality of life of people on our subdivision and on Mentom Road.
I'm Mark Caldwell, the other half. Yeah, I would just like to speak if you know the topography of the area. If you enter Mentom from Gun Barrel, you go down a hill. So the land's like this. If you go on to Mentom, you go up to the school Saint Nicholas where the land is is going down like this. So you're looking at a funnel for water. And there's been housing built all around this. So my recommendation is before you would approve this, that there'd be an environmental study of whether there's a danger to the area flooding. Because this is it's a very narrow lot. Right now, it's about the only lot around there that's left with with any woods. You tear out those woods, there's nothing to stop flooding, and that's where all the water goes for that area.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sharon C. I am part of the Pinewood Mentom community, and I agree with the colleagues ahead of me. It's saturated, guys. It's just too much. And the traffic, as they said, is horrible. You can't walk. There are no sidewalks because when the developers come in, there are no sidewalks required for their areas. So it's just bad. And we have units that haven't even opened yet at the corner of Gun Barrel and Mentom. That area is being developed. It's not ready yet. It's going to be even more traffic. You come around the corner, you're at Mentom. I mean, you're at Pinewood. I was here last month with the other gentleman that was there. We haven't met yet, but you know, we're just saying sometimes these developers and even the people that live in the community like myself, want a bill, at least call the neighborhood out and ask them for a public meeting. There's a church there. The church is more than willing to open its doors for the investors, the developers, the community to come in and meet, and that's what's not happening. So we just want to know that we can live in an environment that all of our green space is just about eaten up. And it's just not a community that we're used to. And as I said here before, my great grandfather with one plow and one mule and the children built these two roads. And for them not to come and at least ask us what we would like to see in our neighborhood is unacceptable.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ingram.
And so first off, I want to apologize. Like I said, I had I had two eyes done, and so I've been kind of sitting at home because you know, you're not supposed to get infected. But how about let me defer this thirty days and let me meet with the neighbors? Can we can we can I can I put that out there?
We have a we have a motion to defer for thirty days. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we've just deferred this for thirty days to give him the opportunity, developer, to meet with y'all and discuss his plans. We'll hear it again in thirty days. Last item here under new business is case twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight six. It's item fourteen. It's located at eleven zero seven Northmore Road. And it's an application to lift conditions. Staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other. Is there any opposition present? All right, you're here in opposition. All right, and the applicant's present? Yes, okay. Mr. Schultz?
This is to be clear, this is not a rezoning case. This property is already rezoned to RN three. It did get rezoned with conditions. So this request is to lift two conditions from that previous ordinance, which is thirteen eight three eight. The request is to lift condition number one and five. So it's roughly three acres in size. Number used proposed is seventy-nine units. That's a density of twenty-six point three. When the zoning case came about about two, three years ago, there was, as you might imagine, some opposition here to height in this area, and flooding was a big concern at that time. This site was rezoned from R one to R three in twenty twenty-two with conditions. Those there are six conditions. Again, they're trying to lift condition one and five. Maximum building height of three stories. Type A landscape buffer around the perimeter where abutting the R one residential zone. No request to lift that condition. That condition will remain. No vehicle access to Bella Vista Drive unless required by transportation or fire marshal. No request to lift that. No building within fifty feet of R one residential zone property excluding the church at one 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 five Northmore Road, which is proposed to be subdivided. No request to lift that condition. Condition number five is a maximum of sixty-three residential units. They would like to lift or amend, actually want to amend that condition to change it to seventy-nine residential units. And finally, condition number three talks about a landscape buffer. There's no request to lift that, so that condition will remain. Here's the property. It's a vacant piece of property. To the north is the church, the institutional. To the east across Northmore is Brainerd High School, which is the institutional. To the south is the institutional. And then to the west is single unit typical, single unit residential subdivision. Here's a view of the site from Northmore Road. This is a site from Bella Vista, and you see the church in the back of that picture. North of the side along the Northmore Road. This is south of the side, one of the institutional uses. I think it's an office type use. East of the side is the Brainerd High School. This is looking towards Bella Vista, the site's on the right hand side. Here's the site plan, same site plan. It was submitted with rezoning case in twenty twenty-two. The only change is the number of units and the height. So it's the same site plan. As far as related to the maximum lifting the condition of maximum three stories, the RN three zone has a sixty-five foot maximum building height for multi-unit residential buildings. Lifting this condition could introduce a five or six story building into a primarily low intensity residential area where building heights do not exceed two stories. residential area where building heights do not exceed two stories typically. So staff recommends to deny the applicant's request to lift the high condition. The second request is to amend the maximum number of units from 63 to 79. That's, oh, lift, sorry. Let me say they want to lift. There's no concerns of lifting condition number five to increase the density because of post 79 units, a 16-unit increase from what was previously approved. This is a reasonable increase in density because it's approximately half the density is allowed in RN3 as presently zoned. So staff recommends to deny the applicant's request to lifting condition number one and deny lifting condition number two, but amended to say 79 units.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear first from the applicant.
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Hathaway. I'm the pastor of Greater Tucker Baptist Church. And certainly, I want to thank you for your time. Let me say, first and foremost, maybe there was a little confusion along the lines of the height. We're satisfied with three stories. Our original plan was for three stories. What happened is we applied to increase the number of units based on the change of the density rules. But there was some miscommunication there. But our plan causes, calls for no more than three stories. We don't, we don't think five stories or six stories would fit in our community at all. So I want to make that very clear. And whatever we need to do to adjust that, that's not a problem.
All right, so you've had, you've heard the staff recommendation?
Yes. Oh, we're, right.
So then you're, you're fine with the staff recommendation?
We're fine with it.
Okay. Well, we've got some folks here in opposition.
Okay.
Let's hear from them.
Okay, I just want to make the, make it clear that we're not, we're not interested in five units, three stories.
Mr., to clarify to that, we, the applicant for this is, see them here, Mr. Kenner. He did reach out to us, and he's the one who told us he wanted to lift that condition, not, okay, so, to where it came from, it was somebody else, not the church.
Sure. Okay. So if you're here and you're in opposition and you wish to speak, now would be the opportunity to do that.
My name is James Keefe, and I live at 4903 Bella Vista Drive. The property they are talking about is exactly next to me. I bought the church sanctuary 30 years ago. My water lines run directly under that land. The church is sure, meaning whoever bought it, they might never have to worry about that. But what they are trying to do is build something in a neighborhood that's been a neighborhood for years. Single-family neighborhood, where most people are retired in their neighborhood, and they spend, they take a lot of pride in their property. Now, I don't know why this church decided, except for money-wise, that they wanted to put a three-story building on the property next to our homes. Now, I don't know what to do. They say it won't decrease my value. The city just raised the value of my home, and I got to pay tax on $288,000 down. What is it going to do to the rest of the homes? They cannot build out to Wendell Trail, and the area they talk about going out of is most dangerous place on Brainerd Road, on Moore Road. We've had so many, we've had at least three or four people killed directly in front of their church in that curve. There's no other way they can come out. So I don't know what they're thinking about or what they want. But I'm telling the council and anybody else, they need to look at the death rate and the accidents on Moore Road directly in front of that church in that property that they want to be along. Thank you.
Hello, my name is R.C. Reeves. I'm at 1314 Learning Lane, Chattanooga, Tennessee, as you know. I came and spoke to you all over two years ago, so some of you all may remember. At that time, it was very divisive in our area in regards to adding the senior care or senior housing. We did get to what I would say a compromise at that time, and we made concessions. And what it appears to us now is that now we're having to come back and rehash that. And so that's very concerning for us. I think a lot of people are familiar with this particular area. It's right in that curve on North Moore Road, across from Brainerd High School. To increase the density, I think, would be very concerning, not only for the traffic flow. It's a low-lying area flooding. But I'm just really concerned with adding more units into that area. And as Mr. Keith just mentioned, you also have people that are living there in single-family homes. So we already have, and I'm glad to understand that they're not trying to raise the height, but you already have two, three levels. It's backing up against someone's property. There's no one up here who will want to have a two, three-story building behind your property as it is. Now, here it is, two years later, and we're coming back, and they're wanting to increase the density in an area that is, has a high traffic flow. You got people coming out the church, people coming to school each morning. You got the Brainerd Rec Center that they didn't mention that is highly populated right there at that area as well. So what we're asking is for you all to deny the request for additional units, and for us to keep the constraints that we had previously agreed upon two years ago, and ask that we do not rehash that since we came to an agreement on how the property would be used between the church and the residents in that area. And I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Richard Reynolds. I reside at 1102 Vannoy Drive. I've been there about 30, 40 years. And my main concern is for the residents that live adjacent to Tucker Baptist in the field, which I do. I live on Vannoy. And it's like a flatland. It's like a marsh. They put a drain in to try to prevent the flooding. It's flooded right now, right now as we speak. I have pictures, and it just comes over into the backyard. My main concern there, too, is when they build it up, where's the water going to go? It's only one drain. It comes out under our house to Vannoy Drive. I'm just going to ask you to deny, deny, and thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. You can come back up.
Well, certainly, we try to be good neighbors, and I'm grateful that our neighbors came today to express their concerns. But we do believe there are ways that we can mitigate some of the issues they're talking about. Let me say, our original plan was for 82 units, originally. We started with that. And only because of the density rules at that time is why it was approved at 63. So all we're doing is actually going back to our original plan. And also, we never got to the point of having really more discussions with the neighbors because we have applied for tax credits. Our plan includes state tax credits, and we did not receive them. And we have another plan now that we think will help us to get to the finish line. But let me say this. So we did not come back to them and talk about some of the things that they wanted to see as a part of our project, or things they wanted to be for, I guess, the beautification and some other activity programs for the community. So I'm just saying that we're willing to work with the community to the extent that we can. But, you know, there's something called, in the development world or in the business world, economies of scale. And that's a reality, too, as we look at, when we talk to the developers, about 63 units versus 80 or 79 units. It's a huge issue with the state and some of the other people that we're talking to about funding for this project. It is, it's a large project. It's, as I mentioned, about 79 units. The total cost is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $15 million, $16 million. So again, we're trying to maximize the funding, the financing, along with working with our neighbors.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I had a question for Pastor Hathaway. One of the residents said that y'all had an agreement with how this was going to be done. And it seemed like a change was made, and Mr. Kenner was here earlier, and he departed. Didn't look like he was too happy. So did y'all have an agreement? And has it been broken by someone or?
Not really. We had an agreement to work together as, you know, once we kind of got to the point where we were going to truly do some planning, I guess, again, beautification, activities, things of that nature. That's primarily what we came together on, that I think what was mentioned, something like a community benefits agreement or something along those lines.
I just can't see how the community and the church aren't together on this. I just believe we got to get this together, guys.
Is it, on the plan, it said senior housing? Is this, is this deed restricted to senior housing?
Yes, yes, ages 55 and above. It's affordable housing. I want to make that very clear, too. Because that's in line with the mission of our church, to provide housing. That's a huge need. I don't have to tell you all. You all know that. It's huge needs. There's a huge need and gap in our community as well.
For sure. And especially for senior housing. I'm just making sure that I, it is, in fact, restricted to 55 and older, not, couldn't be, if it's deed restricted, then that means it has a force going forward rather than, you know, change, something could change, and that could really be detrimental, but senior housing is another issue.
Yes. And they have, they have to be somewhat independent. And then there's some income levels as well. Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Pastor, good to see you. First of all, thank you for providing something that the city desperately needs, which is more affordable housing, especially for our senior community. I just want to state for the room, there is nothing we can do today to prevent this lot from being built on. They have already gotten the zoning. They need to build multifamily. We're just talking about the number of units. And to Pastor Cottle's question, we're going to see this a little bit more because since the time that this project was originally approved, almost two full years ago, we've passed, this body has passed a new zoning code for the city of Chattanooga that was later adopted by City Council 90 that increased the overall density allowances on nearly every parcel in the city. So he's merely taking advantage of what we literally ask people to take advantage of by, by increasing the density in these zones. And I look forward to voting yes, but I don't want to interrupt the discussion if there's more. Thank you.
Is there any more?
I think this just comes down to the fact, Moore Road is a four-lane road in an amenity-rich neighborhood. I don't see any reason to stand in the way of increased density and removing the unit cap here. I mean, there's a community center across the street. There's four lanes available for traffic. I know flooding is a concern, and I think if that's the case, then we might be better suited discussing, you know, built area ratios and that sort of thing. But I'm not sure if that's in our purview at this time. I know that we may go through land disturbance, they'll have to manage stormwater according to city ordinance.
Yes, they're going to be told what to do with, you know, with poll and ground attention. That's going to be required as a part of this project.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Commissioner Anderson, is this the first of the, first project in the city to utilize the voluntary incentive?
Maybe so. I'm not sure.
Senior affordability that we were asking for two years ago.
Well, I think it's great for us to be having the conversation, you know. This is, thank you. I mean, that's, I think, to your point, that's exactly what they were intended to do. And, you know, it's beneficial, I think, for us as planning commissioners to know that if this is a tool that's going to be utilized, we will be seeing it more often and to be prepared when it is a tool that's coming forward, that we clearly understand, you know, that's what's going on. But, so thank you for illuminating that point. But I think that's, I think that's great. Thank you for giving us such a good opportunity to have a good, healthy discussion and look forward to seeing that project move forward.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So I recall when this came up previously, you know, the neighbors behind you, and I'm pretty familiar with the area, were upset that it was a three-story building. I think at the time, and one of the residents, or Brian, you'd have to jog my memory as to why the 63 residential unit restriction was applied. But, you know, I think that, looking at the residential property, the way it is now, where it's at, it's really tough to, and I understand the concern of housing and the need for more housing, like what you're trying to do. I just think it's a really tough transition between the residential, single-family properties and the three-story building. And I'll be voting against the increase of residential properties, or residential units. But for many of the reasons, I think we may have forgotten how, how many people showed up at the previous meetings that lived in this neighborhood, and we approved a three-story, a three-story building on, on the church property. I think, I don't think anybody that lives there is against increasing seniors' affordability for living. I think they, they are, however, concerned with their property values, how you are impacting with this development, their property already with three stories, and understanding the density, the increased density issues with the new zone. I still think they had valid points previously, and for that purpose, I'll be voting against it for those who weren't here when it came up previously.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I understand something. This, this is still three-story buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We're not changing that. It's still a three-story, just 16 more units is what it boils down.
Mr. Anderson.
Chairman, I commend Tucker Baptist for doing what a lot of churches refuse to do. A lot of churches have been, they have these large footprints next to their church building that are sitting there unused for some potential expansion that in many cases never happens ever. Thank you for meeting the need that, that we have asked you to meet. And with that, I move approval of the staff condition, lifting condition number five, only not lifting condition number one, the height requirement.
We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I'd like to make a couple agenda changes, if I could. So we're, we're going to recess here in just a few minutes until 5:00. But what I'd like to do is go ahead and cover six, seven, eight on our agenda, if we could. So does staff have any updates? I don't want to pick this up at 8:00.
No, I don't have any updates. This, Dan.
It's okay to say no, Dan. He teed you up.
That's a softball here.
It was a softball. They had the issue.
Staff update, I just want to say we have incredible staff.
Okay, well, there you go. Staff is incredible. All right. And do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? All right. And can I get approval of the planning commission minutes of April 14? We have a motion, and it was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will adjourn. I mean, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Recession.
Yes. I'll be recusing myself from the area plans this afternoon, so I'll leave it in y'all's capable hands.
Thank you for that. But anybody else? So is everybody else planning on being back?
We have food at 4:00.
Okay, so.
I move that we recess this meeting until 5:00 P.M.
Right. That's fine, 5:00. Yes, we have a motion. It was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, be back here at 4:00. Mr. Payne, 4:00. Mr. Payne, 4:00.